Twenty, twenty twenty four, the time is nine AM. I'm calling this meeting to order. In attendance are Commissioners Brooks and Duncan. Are there changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Public comments. Hearing none. Our first item is Cootney Member Health and Wellness Clinic Presentation by PMR Engagement Team. And I was hoping that we could just kind of go around so everybody kind of knows who everybody is. So I'll actually start this way. So Commissioner Leslie Duncan.
Commissioner Brooks. Prosecutor Stan Wirth. Chief Deputy Assistant Attorney.
Judge Vermaat. Chief Deputy Court Press.
Sylvia Proud, Agent Director.
Coco Brockoff, Alliant.
Scott Burkhart, Alliant.
Claudia Sanders, Nurse.
Robert Doxy, Physician.
Jared Solis, Operations for PMR.
Brittany Weber, Marketing for PMR Healthcare.
All right. Fantastic. Let's take it away.
Awesome. Well, first of all, thank you guys so much for inviting us to join you today. We really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about an awesome new benefit that you guys are already aware of, that the county is bringing very, very soon. So today, we're going to talk a little bit about the Cootney Health and Well, Member Health and Wellness Clinic powered by PMR Healthcare, and then we're going to open up for questions for you guys. That way, we can hopefully address any concerns or big ideas that you guys have so far. So just to start, a little bit about PMR Healthcare. We were established in two thousand and five, and PMR actually partners with like-minded employers specifically to provide healthcare solutions. Our entire focus is on finding like-minded partners, and we found a great one here with the county, who really see the benefit of investing in their employees' long-term health and understand that healthy, happy lives are one of the biggest benefits in the community. So to start, one of the biggest questions that will be asked and that you've all been asked and we're sure people are wondering is who is eligible to use the clinic? This is everyone who is on the county's health plan. So that's employees on the health plan, spouses on the health plan, dependents on the health plan. Anyone on the health plan is actively invited to come in, and we encourage them to at least give us a try. I believe you all already know where the clinic is located, but just for reference, it is what used to be the Ironwood Family Practice Building. It's on the upper floor. So super convenient for people looking for their care. And when the clinic opens, which we're told that that's going to be about April-ish, so we're really looking forward to that and getting that date out to you as soon as we have it, it'll be open Monday through Friday, eight to twelve, and then one to five. We are technically closed for provider appointments from that twelve to one block. Our doctor likes to eat, don't we all? However, we'll still be typically open for like medication pickups and things. It just wouldn't be a scheduled appointment slot during that time. Those hours are reevaluated on an ongoing basis, and we actually evaluate all utilization to see if hours need flexed for, you know, extended hours on certain days, shorter hours on other days, things like that, based on actual utilization over time. So the clinic hours actually get to grow with the clinic. We're going to dedicate just a little bit of time to what we consider one of the biggest resources you have, especially as we're waiting for the clinic's opening day, and that is the clinic's website. So there are some business cards up at the front of the room that we can give to you at the end, and they have a QR code that will take you to the PMR CootneyCounty.com. They also just have the website URL, so that works out. And this is where you'll arrive. So when you arrive on the webpage, you'll click the View Your Patient Portal button, and you'll notice that you're immediately prompted for a password. That password is also on the business card. We're emailing out that passcode to access the website to everyone that we have emails from on the eligibility list, and then they'll be able to enter it right here. Once they do, they're brought to the actual clinic's website into the actual full piece of information, and here's where you land. So if you were to stop here and scroll down, that is where you will find any information about upcoming events, health information, the clinic's newsletter, all of that good stuff. Currently, what you can also find right here is the full prescription list that we have available. There's over four hundred and fifty medications. So if you have any questions about specific items, please absolutely take a look. If you are to stay at the top of the page and if you're ready to kind of set up your patient account, you can go ahead and click this Access by Patient Portal button, and you'll be taken to a page that looks just like this, where you'll be able to create your patient account. Now, the passcode into the clinic's website is a public-ish. It's for all patients, right? That's everyone has that passcode to get into the website. But this is your personal account. So while we're here, I just want to make it really, really, really clear that everyone who has seen for all your primary care and sick care at the clinic, your health record is held by PMR. PMR protects that record. So when you're signing up with your patient portal, this login is unique to you. And to keep everything as confidential as possible, we ask that you use your personal email address, not your county or work email address, just based on the public record of emails, of course, with the county. And we're recommending that to everyone, just so you always have that data. So once you go into your patient portal, there's a lot of awesome things you can do. Once we set up, you'll be able to make appointments and actually just request those straight there. You'll be able to talk with your medical team. You'll be able to request medication refills, see your entire patient record. All of that good stuff is readily available right here. So that's why we recommend using it as a valuable resource, and the website itself has a lot of ongoing information, so it's a great way to stay up to date. Of course, you'll also get a lot of information from us ongoing. We send out a lot of emails and things. So without further ado, we're going to give our care team a chance to introduce themselves. So Dr. Doxy, would you like to start by introducing yourself?
Sure, yeah, I think I've introduced myself to most of you. But Dr. Robert Doxy, I come from a military background. Spent most of my time in the Air Force in primary care, occupational medicine and aerospace medicine, treating professionals and their families, so kind of a similar environment. Trained out in California and Ohio mainly. And yeah, like a master's in occupational medicine as a side focus. So very nice to meet y'all and look forward to getting to know you again.
My name is Claudia Sanders, and I moved to Cartelanes from Denver, Colorado, and to Denver from Fairbanks, Alaska. I have over thirty years of experience in nursing, and my master's is in business from Regis University. And I'll be coming to you from the Hegdon Clinic.
Thank you, guys. So obviously, you guys have probably already seen a lot of the communications talking about how care from the clinic is free. We got lots of awesome, free, zero-dollar, out-of-pocket things for those health plan members that are eligible to use the clinic. But we wanted to give you kind of a broader idea of what could be included with that so that you kind of have an idea of things you can come see us for. So Jared, would you like to explain that, please?
We're going to touch on these. Again, my name's Jared Solis. I'm Regional Operations for PMR Healthcare. So the daily operations and the workings. I'll be the point of contact working with the county and the Commissioner. We're going to touch on these, going to run through them pretty quick so we can go through the rest of the presentation. Episodic care, sick care. That's what everybody's kind of gotten used to as far as what healthcare is being provided now. It's just sick care, right? Not feeling well, cold flu-type symptoms, that stuff, okay? That's obviously always available. Some of the things that we're going to be driving our, you know, the county employees into and their families is more than preventative and the wellness. And that's where we're going to get into primary care. This is not an all or nothing. If somebody already has a primary care physician and they have access and they feel like their medical care is being treated, by all means, they can keep those primary care physicians. We can do what's known as collaborative care. And if they want to come over and have needs that we can facilitate them with, then we can do that collaborative care. If they don't have access or they don't care for their primary care physician, we'll be more than happy to take over their care. So, but it's, we're making sure that everybody knows it's not an either-or. It's a collaborative, it's an additional option, it's an additional benefit that has been provided. Preventative care, this is where, again, we're going to start differentiating PMR Healthcare from traditional healthcare models is that we know not only want to take care of the episodic episode, why they're sick now, but what we can do to keep them healthy, okay? And we'll work with the patients and the Cootney County team to make sure that we have their overall healthcare in mind. Chronic disease management, something that's kind of an offshoot, but there's certain diseases that they're just going to have to be managed and mitigated throughout life. You know, COPD, congestive heart failure, certain things. Again, we can help manage and mitigate that, that they're going to have to deal with the rest of their lives. Nutrition and dietary care, this gets into the wellness part of things. Obesity management, personal fitness, parts and pieces of the mental health. You know, that's all the nutrition, dietary care, parts of the component of the wellness. Lifestyle changes, what I refer to this as substance abuse and/or use. You know, smoking sensation, products, nicotine, if they want to divert from that. Again, any other substance abuse or use. Lifestyle changes, this also falls into the obesity management and that stuff. And then into the physicals. It's synonymous with wellness. You'll hear the physicals come out as PMR physicals in some media and also known as a wellness program. But the physicals are very comprehensive. We do generalized wellness physicals, we do DOT physicals, we do gynecological physicals, school and sports physicals that may be needed. I'll be working with Sylvia and part of the team to expand that on some of the more isolatory fit-for-duty for the Sheriff's Department and respiratory fit tests and some other isolatory physical-type requirements for some of the other departments. The big key on this is not only transitioning the mindset from episodic care or sick care to overall wellness. We want to help Cootney County and the members get healthy and then stay healthy.
Thank you. So in addition to this really wide variety of care that's going to be available to the county health plan members, we also offer a few other things through the clinic for no out-of-pocket cost. The first of these is prescriptions. So we are actually a, the clinic is operating as a dispensary. This is not the same as a pharmacy. So just to kind of clarify what that means is we have a list of over four hundred medications, and we've closely reviewed the county's claims data to see which ones are the most commonly used. That way, we can initially stock the clinic and then we can add things as they become needed. These do not include controlled substances or scheduled medications. However, it's a very expansive list, so I'll again invite you to see that on the website. So what you'll find with prescriptions is if you would like, if you already have a scheduled prescription or a normal prescription that you're receiving, for example, that you would like to receive for no costs through the clinic, all we'll need you to do is make an appointment. You'll be able to come in, you'll see Dr. Doxy. He'll evaluate you and discuss the medication that you're currently taking, confirm that he agrees with that treatment plan and that you agree with that treatment plan. Everything's good. And then he'll basically re-prescribe that. That way, it's coming through the clinic because we can only dispense what we prescribe. If you have a need for a medication that we don't carry, Dr. Doxy will just prescribe that, and it'll be a script sent out to your preferred pharmacy, just like normal. That'll go through your insurance. We don't take those outside provider scripts, however, so I just want to make sure it's really clear that you will need to see Dr. Doxy before you can begin getting those. However, that is not true for labs and diagnostic testing services, so that's exciting news. So if you have, for example, every six months, some lab work that you get done standardly, you will be able to actually bring in your outside providers' orders or they can call those in, and you can do your draws right in the clinic without having to have a co-pay or going to a lab corps or anything like that. We actually can do that right in the clinic for you. So definitely some good news there and a great way to save some money. Jared touched on the physical briefly, and I know we don't have a lot of time today, so if you guys have any questions about this, please do let us know. And you're going to be getting a lot of information about your physicals and different things that that includes from my team, which is the Patient Engagement Team. So, but in the meantime, what we want you to understand is one of the things that PMR really stands out because of is our dedication to root cause medicine, full-body care, and that means having a full picture of your health. So we ask everyone to come in to get a physical once a year. We call it our PMR Annual Wellness Physical. You'll come in, and it's two appointments. And then during those appointments, which include lots of different testing, that you're literally with the care team for the whole time because we don't believe in long waits for those, you'll actually be establishing your personal healthy baseline so that if you do have a health incident at some point, you can literally, we can look at your numbers personally and get you back to what's your personal norm, or even better, versus just saying, oh, you're back in range. Jared's already touched on this, but we want to make it really abundantly clear that the clinic is not an all-or-nothing option. It is made for additional access for you because there's a lot of people, obviously with provider shortages, that cannot currently get into a provider. It's made for those who are interested in expanding their own health, improving their health. It is a great option. So you don't have to get a physical before you can come see us for anything else. You don't have to, you know, have an appointment way in advance. If you wake up one day and you don't feel well, we want to see you. So that's just something we want to be really, really clear on. The clinic is always available. If you need to see a specialist or other doctor for a service that's not available within the clinic, that's also perfectly fine. As we kind of went through, we provide a wide range of services, typically more expansive than your average primary care provider does just because we aren't limited by appointment times. However, if you do need a specialist or other doctor, we'll just provide you with a referral and we'll get you to the appropriate person in the community. We can help you make those appointments. We follow up with you afterwards to make sure that you are comfortable with your care plan and that you're not confused or feeling lost and out there. Advocacy is also very important to us. We were really focusing on making sure our patients have their happiest, healthiest lives. We're going to open up for questions, but just a few more things first. And that is, so as I mentioned, there's a business card up here that you'll be able to find the same website, same access code, same QR code, all on it. So that's good to go. You'll want to keep that so that way, when you're ready to set yourself up as a patient, you have the information you need. Also, in advance, if there's any questions you have, you're always welcome to email us before the clinic opens. You'll notice that the phone number is not up here, however, and that's because until the clinic opens, the phone lines will not be open either. We'd love to see, to talk to you on the phone or see you sooner, but right now, you'll just hear the sound of paintbrushes going. So we'll wait until, we'll wait until we're ready. But in the meantime, can we go ahead and open up for questions that anybody has? Any thoughts, excitement, other feelings?
I have another.
I kind of have a question, and this is maybe more along the HR thing. If we notice one of our employees is not feeling well, can we suggest they go to the clinic?
Sure, I think we can always open that up.
You need, sorry.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I should know better. We could recommend that they go, but we don't typically mandate that they go. But I think people would be more in tune to go and see Dr. Doxy in the clinic because it's at no cost to them. So great service.
Okay, thanks.
I think you might have just answered that. So it said free, unlimited?
Yes.
Does that mean like no copays, no bills afterwards? I mean, it's just, really?
That's correct. And to be really dramatic about it, if you try to hand us money, we're going to throw it back at you. We don't, we really do not want your money. The county is absolutely funding this initiative. It's a really big part of why we're so picky about our partners because we know that we want to see people who are really actively invested in their employees' health. And we're really excited that the county sees that value. So yes, everybody gets to keep their own dollars in their pockets.
So, I mean, if, like if a kid cuts their finger and they need stitches, is that kind of beyond what this is or is this still something like that even?
Yeah, yeah. Any basic primary care, you know, if it's minor procedures or, yeah.
Okay.
If it's outside of my scope, you know, definitely I'll let you know or we'll figure out some way to manage it, whether we send it to another provider. But, you know, outside of specialty testing, there's not a lot that, you know, we can't do.
Do you do x-rays?
We don't have in-house x-rays.
The reason why I was asking is, you know, sometimes you go to urgent care, they x-ray you and they say, go to the hospital. Then you're looking at two bills. If we go to you first, get the x-ray, then go to the hospital. But, so x-rays is a little beyond what's provided, but minor stitches and stuff.
We'll still order the x-ray, and if it's quick, you know, I know the Hegdon Clinic's currently trying to get access to their PAC system so we could see the x-ray, so maybe we could get just a wet read on it before the radiologist can get their read back. So maybe we can treat it in-house, especially if it's not a fracture. So the goal, I guess, is to, you know, limit the expenses, and if we can prevent you from going to the hospital, we will. If it's not something that's real urgent, we can send you to the x-ray and see as soon as the read's back if we aren't able to get access to the actual images.
And is this like by appointment only or can we truly kind of treat this like an urgent care? Maybe stop to see you guys first?
Yeah, go for it, yeah.
So there's a few things about appointments. First of all, there's three ways to make an appointment, so I want to make sure that's really clear, too. One, the patient portal, which we covered, that you can always go online, see what's currently actively available. Two, you can call the clinic, and three, you can send an email. So three ways to outreach for appointments. If you do have something, you wake up with a sore throat tomorrow, so just as an example, and if we were open tomorrow, but say for the sake of the example, right? You wake up with a sore throat, you go on through your patient portal, and you see that there's not like an active appointment slot right first thing in the morning or anytime that you're available, and you're like, oh, not ideal. You'll give us a call, and what we'll do is we'll say, oh, hey, we don't show open appointments, but we do have some time at this point. Come on in, we'll get you treated. So that's how that works. We request that you call in advance of coming in because limiting wait times is really important to us. We know that especially if you don't feel good, you don't want to sit in our waiting room when you could be in your pajamas at home for a little bit longer, feeling miserable there. So in many ways, yes, the walking in is fine, but we do recommend you call first. Yeah, that way you know.
And Max, this is Scott. In my experience going to urgent care, you know, I'm sitting there with me or my kids for an hour or two anyway. So you're going to be more likely to be seen in an urgent setting if a bone's not sticking out.
Especially if you call first, yeah.
By going to the PMR, then urgent care. And you can always go from PMR to urgent care to the ER if necessary. You know, again, because doctor can triage and there's no cost.
Yeah, and we recommend starting at the clinic for that exact reason. Dr. Doxy can explain this better than I can, but could you explain how like with certain things, you can't even do the imaging right away?
Oh, the only time that's applicable is if there's an MRI, if you had like a torn ligament or something, and if you do it while it's really inflamed, it's just difficult to see. But x-rays and stuff you can do, and it's good to do right after the injury only because you want to know if it's fractured so you can determine the, how much limiting you should, how much you should limit the patient so they don't re-injure it. But yeah, for the most part, any imaging is good to do right at that point, unless it's like a torn ligament or something, which would take a, you know, a couple months to get to the process of correcting it anyway through a surgery, so the imaging's kind of irrelevant, you know.
Thank you. I knew it came up the other night, so I was like, I'll let you touch on that one. Thank you.
I had a question on lab testing. Say your doctor writes it or you prescribe it, someone comes in like a concern of vitamin D levels. Many times, that's not covered under insurance. Is that something you guys will test for? If typically a doctor tries to do a test that's not typically covered under insurance for blood labs or?
Do you do a sitz?
Yeah, so vitamin D specifically, yes. It's in the formulary as part of the wellness physicals as well.
Okay.
It's part of the PMR. So we have, like Brittany mentioned, we have a very extensive formulary for labs. And so there's a lot of things that insurance won't cover. They make you jump through the hoops, and that's why we're all kind of navigating away from that model. So if it's something that happens not to be on the formulary, it will run through normal assurance, and we'll have that conversation with you, whether it's a PMR prescribed, a recommended lab, or an outside. But vitamin D levels, all the stuff that preventative wellness, overall medical professional should be looking at is all included in that wellness.
And for reference of how expansive our labs are, like we range from everything, like we include PAC smears and things like that even. So it's a very wide range. Anybody else have any questions?
I think your biggest potential enemy here is your success. What do you do when you, people take advantage of this, especially in the beginning?
Yeah, so we naturally expect there to be a rush into the clinic for the first few months. We know there's been a lot of people who have had limited healthcare access. There's a lot, there's fewer and fewer providers out there. We know there's a lot of people who haven't had a physical in years. We're very aware of that upfront rush. So what happens is, for starters, as utilization changes, we're very aware of that, and we're actively working on the backend to arrange all of our schedules to make sure people get seen. But in the very beginning, so if someone calls up and they're like, hi, I'm actually currently sick, we're going to be like, that, thank you for calling. First of all, thank you for wanting to be one of our first patients, we appreciate it. But second of all, let's get you in within today or tomorrow, within that little short, very short window. That way, we can make sure you're covered for the moment. However, when we have people call about things like this expansive wellness physical, we'll say, what are you experiencing right now? Are you currently having any smaller issues that you want us to take care of? If you're not, that's wonderful, actually, that means you're healthy. But then we're going to schedule you a couple weeks out and get you set on the schedule for that physical. So we do a lot of balancing on our end, and there's a few things that help us with that balancing act. For starters, we have less than half of the potential patients per doctor as the normal outside provider would typically have. Additionally, since the county is actually funding this, so say you are going, say you have a standard provider appointment out in the network. The first fifteen, you'll be scheduled for an hour. The first fifteen to twenty minutes, that provider may actually be going over your records outside of the room or catching up or preparing for your appointment. They may spend nine minutes with you, and then the remainder of that could be dedicated to just billing. Though they might have their hand on the door the whole time, but what they're doing is in that end of that appointment is getting everything covered and listed out. So that's, and then you're billed for that full hour. Our providers aren't worried about trying to get that captured in that way. We, of course, do good note-taking and patient records and all that stuff, but we, we've already been paid. The county is funding this service. So our providers have a lot more time in that regard as well. So that's one big reason that we have a little more flexibility. But then, of course, we also just have twenty years of experience making it work.
I'm going to say with your experience nationwide.
Yes.
I'm sure you've had some clinics that open up and just go, like, most of them probably sky-high. So you're familiar with that. How do you deal with that? I mean, I understand about triaging the calls, but.
I'll take that. That's a great question, Commissioner Brooks, and I appreciate that. So, yeah, with our, the operations team, we, I mean, we look at that data on a weekly basis, sometimes daily basis, and then, and so we are able to pivot and to swell that if we need to. One benefit here is that, as everybody knows, we have Hegdon Corporation open their clinic, so we actually have a little bit more of a local pool of PMR resources that we can flex and float that if needed, avoiding swelling or initial rushes. But it's also always monitored as far as if the success is what we anticipate and it's going to go crazy, which is a good problem we're all going to have, then yeah, then we have to reevaluate our staffing levels and bring in additional providers and medical staff to support that. It's not, it's not, you know, we look at the metrics and the data and the experience, say, okay, this is where we start, everything has to have a starting point, but then it's very closely monitored and modified.
And ongoing.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Jared, PMR's retention rate is about ninety-eight percent of all clients, right?
Yep.
Why do clinics fail?
Well, I don't, I don't like the word fail. I understand where you're going with this, Scott. Because that's an operational standpoint. But the reason why the retention doesn't continue is mostly, and it does have to do with governments more, as much, but private entities, they get bought out, they get changed in leaderships, which happens in governmental agencies, cities, and counties, and state governments where, you know, get change in leadership. But those are the two primary reasons, you know, leadership changes of some sort. Or again, in private industry, they get bought out and the new company doesn't want to do it. A couple of things that happened there in COVID, obviously it was downsizing. There's a lot of organizations that, you know, went from having two thousand eligible members down to two hundred. Well, it doesn't make sense at that point, right? So those that have transitioned out of this model with PMR, those are the primary reasons.
Phrase it the other way. What are the keys to success of the clinic?
I'll take that one.
Yes.
So our successful clinics really thrive when we have a good fit between the care team and the community so that we are, they're serving. So in this case, as you guys all know, Dr. Doxy was pretty much hand-selected, is a perfect fit for this exact community. And we've got great faith in Claudia as well, being a really good fit. We're very selective with our continued hiring as well. So the medical team is a really big integral part of that. The other thing that we see as being important is, and this is part of that partnership, what I referred to. So PMR working really closely with the county to make sure that everyone has the information they need. New employees, people coming onto the plan. We work really closely with your brokers and your insurance team to make sure that people have that info as soon as they need it and they can know about coming in so that we can encourage utilization. And honestly, I would say one of the biggest things that makes a market successful clinic is built trust, because trust is built slowly and over time, and as you slowly begin to see, we are going to be there for you. We are here for access. We really mean it when we say we won't take your money. We really mean it when we say we're here to support you with this very, very large picture of your health. It is a favorite saying of our CEO that we want to be the quarterback of your healthcare team, and I think that's a really accurate thing. Once we've become that for the county, that's when you- that's when that trust really starts to shine through. Does anyone have any other questions?
Nothing? Guess you did a really good job, so.
Thank you.
All right. Any other thoughts or comments before I call for public comment? Okay. Jonathan, anyone on the line? All right, public comment in the audience. Okay, 9:30 meeting adjourned. Thank you all.